If you'd like to move up, but please, if you are not a resident or not a voter, registered voter, you would sit towards the end of the hall. Everyone needs to be on this side of the ropes, pretty much. Ladies and gentlemen, checking with the tellers, checking in, I'd like to confirm that we do have 229 voters plus in the hall, the time being approximately 7:12 on Monday night. I'd like to read the warrant. I'd like to open at this point in time the special and the annual town meeting set for Monday, April 2nd, 2012, at Abington High School. Town of Abington Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the constables of the town of Abington and the name of Commonwealth of Massachusetts are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants who qualify to vote in the affairs to meet at the town at the Abington High School, 201 Richard Francis Curtis Way, precinct 5 of Sev- Abington, and Monday, on Monday, the 2nd of April, 2012, at 7 o'clock in the evening for the special town meeting, and at 7:05 for the annual town meeting. The warrant has been signed by a majority of the Board of Selectmen, and it's been also confirmed that it has been delivered in accordance with the current provisions of our charter and bylaws. Ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the occasion of our town's 300th annual town meeting. The first town meeting was held in Abington over-
Just three centuries ago, and was led by a moderator named William Percy. Over the years and in every year, the residents of our town have come together to meet, discuss, debate, and vote on the issues that mattered most to each generation. We continue that tradition here tonight, and as I thought about how to recognize the importance of this tricentennial, I concluded that what makes Abington a nice place to live, and its biggest asset is, of course, its dedicated and civic-minded residents. Three of them are now here before you, as examples of all things good in Abington, and have asked them to come share the honor of leading us in the pledge allegiance this evening. Before we do that, please let me introduce, first, Mr. Richard Cracker Dunivan. As a true townie, Richard Dunivan helped to start Abington's youth football program in the 1960s. He's also served the town as a member of the Abington School Committee, as a sewer commissioner, as a member of the Housing Authority, as our treasurer, and as our tax collector. Mr. Dunivan is an active member of the St. Vincent de Paul Society, always assisting and brightening the lives of local Abington families in need. Public service runs deep in the Dunivan family, and we are a better town due to the dedication and legacy of Cracker and his family. Thank you, Cracker. I'd like to also recognize Ms. Nancy Reed. A lifelong resident, Nancy was known for her years by children of all ages as "the nice lady" at the Abington Public Library, and she has also served our community with her devotion to her church, the United Church of Christ, which celebrated its own 300th anniversary just last year. Most recently, Nancy brings music to Abington each summer with her work scheduling and overseeing the wonderful Sunday evening concerts during the Summer Concert Series at the Nisby Bandstand. Nancy Reed brings music to Abington, and for years, she has brought smiles to residents of all ages. Thank you, Nancy. And of course, Mr. Jack Bailey. Jack, as you know, has organized the St. Patrick's Day Parade for 33 years now, a parade which has become a wonderful annual community event. Jack now owns and operates Eddie Bailey's Garage, believed to be the oldest family business in Abington, still operating under the same name, and he donates his business location to help dozens of youth groups and civic groups raise money in weekly car washes. Jack, however, is most proud of his seven-year role as the president of the Abington Music Parents, and his longtime bottle-and-can collection and redemption efforts to raise money for Abington's music programs. This year, just about the same time that Abington will celebrate its 300th birthday on June 10th, Jack is on schedule to collect his 2,000,000th redeemable can, and thus hit the mark of having raised $100,000 in donations to the children and families of our town. For decades, Jack has proven that one person, one nickel, and one idea can make a village of Abington a wonderful place to be. Ladies and gentlemen, when we celebrate Abington's history, we celebrate the generations that came before us, and we wish the best for those who'll come after us. I'd ask you to please rise and join Mr. Dunivan, Mrs. Reed, and Mr. Bailey as they lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please be seated. Thank you. You may return to your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome a special guest tonight. It's my honor and privilege to welcome Congressman Stephen Lynch, who is here visiting us here in Abington, to say a few brief words in front of our town meeting. Congressman Lynch.
Hello? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, for your kindness. Normally, I'm in Washington on Monday nights, so this is a wonderful opportunity for me to come and to listen to some of the issues at Abington Town Meeting. As I say, normally, I'm in Washington. I do want to recognize Senator Keenan was here earlier, Representative Jeff Deal is here, let me think, Clerk Creedon is here, and also Registrar John Buckley is also here. I want to recognize my colleagues in government. What I'd like to do, as most of you know, during the redistricting process that just passed last January, the congressional districts have been completely redrawn. As a result, Mr. Keating, who was the congressman for the old 10th district, now has picked up a huge swath of area down by Fall River, New Bedford, and so he is right now trying to focus on representing those families and getting up to speed on the issues that affect those areas. Similarly, I've been attending the town meetings of the new areas in the 8th Congressional District. The reason for that is quite simple. Even though this redistricting has occurred, the matters coming up in Washington continue to roll along without regard to the new districts. So on matters we have upcoming in Washington right now, we have the whole appropriation process going forward. We also have the budget process going forward, which means a lot to the cities and towns that are represented in this congressional district. So in the coming days and weeks, I'll be meeting with the town manager and the Board of Selectmen in Abington to find out what the priorities are, the budget priorities, and the appropriations committee requests are for the town of Abington, hopefully so that things don't fall through the cracks. There are three central bills that are up on the calendar right now in Washington. One is the Budget Control Act. I think many, many people are familiar with the process over the last summer where they created a supercommittee. The goal of the supercommittee and the Budget Control Act was to cut $1.2 trillion out of the United States budget. $600 billion was supposed to come out of Defense, and then the supercommittee was supposed to cut $600 billion out of domestic appropriations. They did not come to an agreement. So what's going to happen now is a process called sequestration, where $600 billion, actually, I'm sorry, $1.2 trillion will be cut across the board from A to Z, beginning with agriculture, going through all the areas of the budget. As I said before, $600 billion will come out of the Defense budget alone, largely those are very expensive weapons projects. The second bill that is also coming before the Congress is actually the Postal Reform Bill. As you may also know, there's a real crisis with the postal service. We, in the current year, we had a drop-off of about $41 billion pieces of mail between 2008 and the current year. This has caused a real hole in the budget for the United States Postal Service, and they're forced into a consolidation plan. I currently serve on a special joint committee with Senator Brown and Senator Collins in Maine, and we have basic agreement on a plan to reorganize the post office. Fortunately, or unfortunately, the postal service has overpaid into their pension fund by about $9 billion. And what has been proposed is to take $1.3 billion out of that budget to allow an early retirement program to go into effect for about 100,000 postal employees across the country. That will allow us to consolidate a lot of the post offices, most of them in large urban areas, major cities such as New York and Chicago, and save massive amounts of money for the United States Postal Service. The third bill, let me think, oh, the Transportation Bill. We have a major problem with the transportation budget. Last week, we were only able to pass a stopgap measure that'll last 90 days. In the state of Massachusetts, we have a critical issue, about $161 million shortfall for transportation projects. This affects bus routes on the South Shore, including Abington. It also affects potentially all of the ferry service that comes from the South Shore and goes to the Boston area back and forth. We have a major part of our workforce that uses the ferry on a daily basis. What we did last week was we basically approved a budget for the transportation appropriations for 90 days, and we're going to go back in 90 days and review that. It wasn't the best result, but considering what we face here, that 90 days will allow all the ongoing transportation projects to continue going. It will allow the states to continue with those state projects, cities and towns to continue with those, and the workers on those projects will continue working. And it gives us a 90-day period to try to come up between, come up with an agreement between Republicans and Democrats, in the House and Senate, and get a larger, long-term budget, which we're all, that is all our goal. Lastly, I just want to say what an honor it is to be here. I understand this is your 300th anniversary. I would consider it an honor to participate in a lot of those ceremonies. I want to thank you for your willingness to be involved in town meeting. This is really the heart of government. I want to thank you for your participation. God bless the town of Abington, and God bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Thank you, Sean. Congressman, just remember, Abington is first alphabetically on the list, and hopefully first on the funding list, okay? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Chairman of our Board of Select, Mr. Chris Ayello.
This past year saw the loss of several prominent members of our community. We proudly dedicate this year's town meeting to the memory of the following people. Joseph Nisby. Meredith Turkot. Adele Deulys. Edmund Orloski. Marilyn Gaffney. Philip LaPointe. Ralph Brett. Henry Cahill. And Melvin Libby. Would you please join us in a moment of silence? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayello. I'd ask you, please, also remember to keep in your minds and hearts the family of Susan Kelly, who recently passed away peacefully, and was the wife of one of our deputy moderators, Bob Kelly. And additionally, please continue to send your well wishes and encouragement to three of our town employees who are continuing to battle their own serious medical issues, Mr. Patrick Farrell, Mr. Nick Malafronte, and I am very pleased to see that Mr. Mark Chorokas is here with us tonight at town meeting. Welcome, Mark. Thank you for your indulgences. My name is Sean Riley, and I'm the town moderator, and it is my responsibility to preside over and regulate the discussion of tonight's articles which appear in the warrant document that was mailed to every home in Abington. Additional copies of the warrant are available on the back tables. Everyone should have a copy of the warrant from the back table, and also a copy of what's titled Exhibit 1, Index and Summary of the Classification and Salary Plan Bylaw. This is the index, the Exhibit 1 is the full text of the personnel bylaw, which will be taken up as part of our annual town meeting. For those of you who may be attending your first town meeting, we're very happy that you've taken the time to be in attendance and take part in your democracy, and for those of you who regularly attend, again, we welcome your continued dedication to the well-being of our town. Tonight, we'll do our best to move the meeting along while trying to be reasonable and provide time to allow for open debate and answer your questions. I'd like to introduce our town clerk, Linda Adams, who sits directly next to me, and our town council, Joe Fair, to the far side of me from Copman and Page. Mrs. Adams will be the clerk of the meeting, and she'll be recording the wording of any motions and results of any votes taken by you, the resident voters. Attorney Fair and town clerk Adams will try to help me run this meeting in accordance with proper procedure as smoothly as possible. Seated to my right are the members of the Abington Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is comprised of residents of Abington who volunteer to review and analyze each article that's to be voted upon at every town meeting. In just a few minutes, we'll ask the chairperson of our Finance Committee, Maureen Jansen, to introduce each member. At the start of our annual town meeting, the chairperson will also be invited to make any introductory comments of her own. I'd like to ask you, please, all abide by the following rules. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and the moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment and ask you to stand and speak, but please use one of the two available microphones, up here in the front or right here in the middle of the floor. We also ask that speakers limit your time when you're speaking so that others will have time to speak. We ask that you also identify yourself, your name, and your address before you speak, as the clerk will be writing that down. Please make sure all comments and questions are relative to the subject matter being discussed for that article. Do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into debating of an issue. If I believe that a speaker is straying from the issues, I'll direct that speaker to limit their portion of the debate. We also, again, ask you to limit your time accordingly. A motion to move the question will be taken up as any other motion from the floor. For those of you who are new to town meeting, a motion to move the question is a request to end all debate and move directly to a vote to approve or not approve the article. To move the question, a person must be recognized by the moderator, and the motion to move the question must then be immediately mentioned. You cannot take the microphone, recite your own personal opinion about an article, and then try to shut off everyone else's debate by moving the question to the conclusion of your comments. Please also understand that the moderator has a right to rule that a motion to move the question is out of order. If I believe that the motion is unfairly or prematurely limiting the voter's right to hear questions answered or to better understand an article or an amendment. Only registered voters are allowed to vote here at town meeting. Again, if you are a nonresident or if you are a non-resident voter, you need to sit at the far ends of the hall in the areas that are marked on the wall as non-registered and unregistered voter sections. Department heads and members of the press are allowed to sit here to my far left. Any person who is not a resident but wishes to address the town meeting must first be recognized by the moderator and have the approval of a majority vote of town meeting members before speaking. However, in accordance with our town charter, nonresident department heads and superintendents who work for our town will be allowed to speak or answer questions, and they may also sit and consult with their relevant committee or board members. Town meeting will strive to adjourn at a reasonable hour. There will be a proposal tonight to postpone action on the so-called money articles until May 21st, I believe will be the date, in that we only address and vote tonight on the non-monetary articles. If for any reason we don't finish those non-monetary articles here tonight, this town meeting will be asked towards the end of the evening whether we should postpone the remaining articles, the non-monetary articles, to Wednesday, 48 hours from now, or if we'll just push everything off that's remaining until May 21st. For purposes of standing counts, I've asked Joe Shea, Kenny Colburn, Kate Marini, and Bob Wing to be my tellers, and I will call on you when needed, and I must appoint a deputy moderator. In Mr. Kelly's absence, and due to disqualification of Mr. Buckley, I'd like to nominate Mr. Kevin Dunivan, a former moderator, as our deputy moderator for tonight. I need to vote to approve Mr. Dunivan's appointment, so all those in favor, your first vote tonight, all those in favor of Kevin Dunivan being appointed deputy moderator, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. Understanding that many of you have babysitters, I ask you, please, turn your cellphones down or put them on vibrate, take any conversations out into the hallway, please, so you don't disturb anyone around you. At this time, I would like to declare that the town meeting be held in recess so that we can begin and address the articles in the special town meeting warrant, which appear at the front page of the warrant that you all should have in your hand. So at this time, I would like to start with Article 1 and introduce the chairperson of our Finance Committee, Ms. Maureen Jansen, and ask that she introduce the remaining members of the Abington Finance Committee.
Thank you, Sean. Again, I'm Maureen Jansen. I'm the chairperson of the Finance Committee. And just not in any particular order, but I wanted to introduce your Finance Committee, Sean Tyler, who is the vice chairperson, Cindy Whiting, the secretary, Stephanie Eastwick, first statistician, Chad Lovett, who's the second statistician, Rick Frainey, Barbara Cristoforo, Kathleen Cahill, Michelle Christian Oldham, and Deb Libby, our recording secretary. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If you turn to the front page of the book, it will see Article 1 is to see if the town will vote to transfer $45,000 from available funds to the FY 2012 Town Accountant Salary Line item or to take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee Chairman will make the motion.
The Finance Committee moves that the town, actually, we don't have a note for Article 1?
Article 1.
Of the special?
Of the special, yeah.
That's where I'm at. I know.
I'll check with you.
Right, sorry about that. Okay. The Finance Committee moves that the town transfer $45,000 from the health insurance line item 001-9140-5175-0500-0000 to the FY 2012 Town Accountant Salary Line item 1350-5100.
So the Finance Committee makes a motion to transfer $45,000 from the health insurance line item to the town accountant salary line item. Is there anything to be heard on the motion to approve Article 1? If not, all those in favor of transferring $45,000 as outlined by Ms. Jansen's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds to the sum of $3,618.95 for payment to waste solutions for an unpaid bill for FY 2011 or take any other action relative thereto. Ms. Jansen?
The Finance Committee moves that the town vote to transfer from health insurance line item 001-9140-5175-0500-0000, the sum of $3,618.95 for the payment to waste solutions for an unpaid bill for FY 2011.
The Finance Committee motions to transfer the sum of $3,618.95 from health insurance to the waste solutions for an unpaid bill for FY 2011. Is anything to be heard on that article? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer $7,000 from available funds to the FY 2012 Building Department Expense Line item for purposes of vehicle repair and maintenance or any other action relative thereto. Ms. Jansen?
By the way, I'm going to change the dollar amount on this. The Finance Committee moves that the town vote to transfer $2,764.78 from the Retirement Line item 001-9110-5177-0500-0000 to the FY 2012 Building Department Expense Line item 2410-5780 for the purpose of vehicle repair and maintenance.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to transfer the sum of $2,764.78 from the Retirement Line item to the FY 2012 Building Department Expense Line item. Is that going to be health?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that, yeah.
The source of the funding, go ahead, Maureen. It's not going to be retirement. We had a late change. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do I have to remake that?
No, you can just cite the health insurance number. The above one? Yeah.
I did rewrite that down. Okay, I'm sorry. It's from health insurance, line item 001-9140-5175-0500-0000. Sorry about that.
No problem. It was, just got to take the money where it exists. So they're transferring $2,764.78 from health insurance to the Building Department Expense Line item for purposes of vehicle repair and maintenance. Question? Do you want to speak, Dory? No, go ahead. Go right ahead.
You were correct. I was retired, I'm sorry. Correct. That was correct. Actually, that, the number that we first read out of retirement was correct. The change is actually to Article 7.
Okay, so, for clarification, I apologize. We're taking $2,764.78 from, as printed, the Retirement Line item-
That's correct.
-to the Building Department. That is your motion. Is there anything to be heard on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of available funds to the sum of $36,941.92 for following amounts for safety support, safety supports for the tricentennial celebration. It's broken down between fireworks and parade, police details, fire details, and highway or take any other action. Maureen?
Okay. Before I make the motion, I just wanted to take a note there. As you can see, that we're amending the total amount requested in Article 4. As the Tricentennial Committee continues to plan and execute events to celebrate the 300th birthday of Abington, they have been successful in their fundraising work. As such, they are agreeable to reducing the funding of this article to $24,441.92. This amount allows for the town to provide safety support for the tricentennial celebration events. Now I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee moves that the town vote to transfer $24,441.92, which is $22,259.17, from debt service interest on short-term debt, line item 001-7500-5925-0500-0000, and $2,182.75 from Council on Aging Salary Line item 001-5410-5110-0500-0000 for the safety support of the tricentennial celebration as printed in the warrant.
Tell you what, Ms. Jansen, I'm going to relieve you of the requirement to say all those line item numbers from here on out. If anyone has a question, it's going to be what is printed. Feel free to ask if you're concerned about the digits, but otherwise, the name of the line item will suffice. So the motion is to transfer the total sum of $24,441.92 as outlined in Maureen's motion as it printed on the top of page four. Is there anything to be heard on this Article 4? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Steve Beltus, 138 Catherine Drive. Just can you get the dates of what the parade and the fireworks display is going to be?
Sure. I can fill you in to save some time. June 10th is the parade, it's the actual birthdate of Abington. Sunday, June 10th will be the parade at 1 o'clock. It'll follow the same route, the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Saturday, June 23rd will be the, I had to say this right, Old Town Country Field Days fireworks and children parade. It'll be starting about mid-afternoon, go into the evening behind Memorial Field. Rain date will be the following day, Sunday, June 24th. There's also a lot more going on. There's information out on the front table, art shows, well, you can read on the front table. Did I answer your question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Article 4? Yes, ma'am?
Marian Wilson, 188 Bello Circle. Just, did you say it's coming from Council on Aging? Why was that picked?
Well, what happens is because we're talking about the current town budget and current outstanding bills and expenses, we go back to certain budget line items that maybe still have some money in them from this year, and the town manager works with the different department heads to make sure where that money is so that we can transfer out of existing funded budget line items. And the Council on Aging indicated that they had this, and they would be willing to let it be transferred to cover an outstanding bill.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Just in a general sense, for those who are new to town meeting, at our annual town meeting, we try to set the budget for the coming year, and a budget is always an estimate. So the special town meeting that we're dealing with right now is kind of tidying it up last year's budget estimates, and we're trying to pay the bills and adjust our accounts accordingly so we can wrap up this current fiscal year. Article, I'm sorry, we need a motion, I mean, a vote, right? Anything else to be heard on Article 4? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 4 as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to transfer from wastewater undesignated fund balance the sum of $300,000 to settle an outstanding judgment or take any other action relative thereto. Mrs. Jansen?
The Finance Committee, I'm sorry, the Finance Committee moves that the town vote to transfer from water undesignated fund balance account the sum of $300,000 to settle an outstanding judgment.
Is there anything to be heard on the motion for Article 5? No? If not, yes? Okay. I saw movement, but didn't know. Please state your name and address.
Bob Greeno, 189 Rockland Street. What is the bill?
What is the bill?
What is the bill? You're not telling us nothing here, what the money goes for.
Moderator, I'd like to recognize the town manager, Mr. John D'Agostino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is to pay for a judgment against the town of Abington in the amount of $300,000. The total outstanding judgment is a total of $900,000, of which $300,000 is being paid for from the account as designated.
Judgment against, what? You're not telling me what this bill is. You're just telling me it's a judgment.
It's not a bill, it's a judgment. It's a case that was existing for many years ago. An employee was discharged, and as a result of that discharge, he sued, and the judgment is against the town in the amount of $900,000, of which we are responsible for $300,000.
Thank you, Mr. Greeno. Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. Is anything further to be heard on Article 5? If not, and all those in favor of approving Article 5 as motioned by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article 5 passes. Majority vote. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $4,900 to cover the costs associated with hiring a temporary assistant director of park and recreation or take any other action relative thereto. Ms. Jansen?
The Finance Committee moves that the town vote to transfer from Retirement Line item the sum of $4,900 to cover the costs associated with hiring a temporary assistant director of park and recreation.
Finance Committee motions to transfer from Retirement $4,900 to cover the costs associated with the hire of temporary assistant park and director. Is there anything to be heard on Article 6? If not, all those in favor of approving Article 6, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer of funds to the sum of $7,000 for student transportation services for Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2011-2012 school year or any action relative there to. Ms. Jansen?
The Finance Committee moves that the town transfer from Health Insurance, the sum of $7,000 for student transportation services for Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2011-2012 school year.
Thank you. Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion to transfer from Retirement $7,000 requested in this article? I'm sorry, did I say, oh, it's from Health Insurance?
It's from Health, right.
My bad. Is there anything to be heard on this article? If not, all those in favor of the motion to transfer $7,000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let me try that again. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. That actually concludes the agenda for our special town meeting. I'd like to declare that the special town meeting of April 2nd is now adjourned as of 7:43. And at this time, I would like to call to order the annual town meeting, and we will begin with Article One. And again, with the handout that you have, you should be on Page Six now for the annual town meeting. Article One is, does not require a vote, is to alert the public of the town elections, which will be held on Saturday, April 28th, right here in the Abington High School gym. Polls will be open from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the evening. It lists there the different officials and elected bodies that will be up for election. There also will be Question One, which regards the school feasibility study, which is a subject matter of an article later this evening in the annual town meeting. If there aren't any questions on that, I would like to take a minute while we're talking about elected officials, and I'd like to thank the following residents for their service on the following boards and committees who have recently decided to either step down or chosen not to seek reelection upon the expiration of their current terms. I'd like to thank Christine Hickey from the Board of Health, Arlene Spalding from the Board of Health, Lisa Dodge from the Board of Memorial Trustees, Steve Bradbury from the Water Commission, Bob Tumi from the Sewer Commission, Mr. Jim West from the School Committee, and Mr. Steve Wakeland from Park and Recreation. I hope I didn't forget anyone, but I'd like to thank them, and I hope you'll join me in the round of applause to thank them for their service. With that being said, I believe unless there's anything else, we can move right to Article Two. Article Two is to see if the town will vote to amend the Personnel Bylaw known as the Classification and Salary Plan. And I would like to, again, point your attention to the separate handout titled Exhibit One, Summary of the Classification and Salary Plan Bylaw. There is a separate booklet that contains the entire text of all the proposes. I would like to give the floor now and recognize FinCom Chairman Maureen Jansen.
Thank you. I'll make the motion for this first. The Finance Committee moves to amend, well, do you mind if I, one second before that?
Introduction.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to do a little introduction quick before we get into that. I wanted to also take a moment to welcome all of you here tonight to the annual town meeting. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be here and for taking an active role in your town's management. Before we begin with the rest of all this, I also wanted to take a second to thank the town manager, the department heads, the school superintendent, and all the town and school staff for continuing to perform their vital functions to keep this town moving and going forward. I'd also like to take a second to thank the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee, as well as all other volunteers appointed and elected, for their continued hard work and dedication they show to the town this year and always. Again, I'd also like to thank the Finance Committee to my right. This group of volunteers has been meeting twice weekly from January until now to review the financial position and the budget of the town. We've been meeting with department heads, the school superintendent, his team, the town finance team, the town manager, basically bringing the residents' perspective to these ongoing financial discussions in the town. I'm grateful to work with them and thank them for their continued dedication and support of the town. As a committee, I know they ask questions that you would ask if you were at all these meetings. Their debate and consideration results in a better understanding of the town finances as a whole. Tonight, we're going to present you with a very full warrant and an agenda that's pretty full as well. We'd like nothing more than to be able to move through the warrant as presented and finalize the FY 2013 town budget. However, as has been done in the past few annual town meetings, we will be recommending that we move forward with some of the articles and that we recommend delaying action on some of the other articles to a later date when we have more reliable financial information. At this time, the state of Massachusetts has not yet provided reliable local aid figures, and Chapter 70's school funds have not yet been finalized. We would prefer to present you with a more finalized budget in a few weeks rather than move forward tonight based, with a budget that's based on less than solid data. As such, we will be recommending delaying action on 12 of the 20 articles in your annual town meeting warrant, and we'll discuss which ones those are after we move forward with Article Two. Like I said again, however, we will be recommending taking action on a number of these articles. Included in those would be a proposed feasibility study for the town's school building needs, town bylaw amendments, a personnel bylaw article, local sales tax issue, town meeting quorum, as well as bylaw amendments focused on preventing illicit discharges into the storm sewer system. Again, I thank you for your time and your consideration tonight. This community has been active and supportive for the past 300 years. Tonight, we continue that heritage of our local town meeting and residents taking an active role in governing their town. The people of this town make it great, and your continued support of the town and one another defines who we are now and who we want to be in the future. Again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jansen, and thank you to the members of the Finance Committee. I'd just like, again, to remind people, if you are registered voters, we'd like you to move forward away from the back wall, because if you're sitting along the back wall, you're going to be considered as a non-voter or a non-resident. There's a whole section of bleachers up here that's empty. If you'd like to move up here and get a great view, and there's also about 20 seats in the front that I can see scattered throughout. But anyone who's sitting under that "non-resident, non-voter" sign will unfortunately not be counted. So please keep that in mind. And I know Mr. Shea will be counting if the need be, the checkers who must remain behind the lines for their work purposes. So with that, we'd like to move to Article Two, again, to see if the town will vote to amend the Personnel Bylaw known as the Classification and Salary Plan. Ms. Jansen?
The Finance Committee moves to amend the Personnel Bylaw known as the Classification and Salary Plan, adopted at the adjourned session of the June 16th, 1997 Annual Town Meeting, as printed in the warrant and by striking in the first sentence of Section 5-1 the words "appointed by the town manager."
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve the proposed Classification and Salary Plan, or the Personnel Bylaw as it's better known. And as I understand it, the proposed deletion is already printed in the material in Section 5-1. So we'd essentially be approving the bylaw as it's printed in Exhibit One. Is there anything to be heard on Article Two? Mr. DeCarlo?
Henry DeCarlo, 187 Central Street. As those who were here at the last town meeting may recall, I opposed this article at that town meeting or a similar article. It was incomplete. It was inaccurate. It omitted some issues. Due to the efforts of the Selectmen, Town Manager's Office, Town Council, we feel that this article is complete now and accurate and should be approved, and I recommend that we approve this article.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Anything else to be heard on Article Two? Mr. Wayne Smith?
On 632, where it discusses about a person that has given false or misleading statements, where it says will automatically disqualify a candidate from further consideration and shall be grounds for dismissal if the candidate should be hired, I would suggest and make the motion that the person will be terminated if the candidate should be hired.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith making a motion to amend the wording in Article 63, Subjection A, Part Two. So, Mr. Smith, you'd like to add language in there that deliberate, false, or misleading statements in the application and selection process will automatically disqualify a candidate from further consideration and shall be grounds for dismissal if the candidate should be hired. I'm sorry, what was the wording?
And will be terminated.
So you'd like to insert the words "and will be terminated" after "shall be grounds for dismissal?"
And will be terminated.
Okay, "and will be terminated." So you'd like to say deliberate, false, or misleading statements in the application and selection process will automatically disqualify a candidate from further consideration and said candidate will be terminated if the candidate should be hired? While we absorb this, is there anything to be heard on the motion or Mr. Smith's amendment? Would anyone like to speak?
Patrick Tyler, 1011 Road. To the amendment, I actually prefer the bylaw the way it was written, or pardon me, the bylaw the way it was written, 632A2, rather, with the original language. It gives the town options and latitude to move forward. It says shall. Right, will is declarative. It means they physically have to take that action. Shall says the town has the rights to take that action. It doesn't restrict them to one course or another. Not saying the person should not be or predisposing the opinion that the person should be terminated, but it gives the town an option. Saying will gives no option.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. So, Mr. Tyler speaks in opposition to the proposed amendment offered by Mr. Smith. Does anyone like to speak on Article Two? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Peggy Keating, 93, Wyman Road. I have a question with regards to the Classification and Salary Plan Bylaw. The one that this is being amended from has had a list of salary classification, department head classifications and salaries that have been associated with it. And I see that that is now listed under Schedule B on Article 2A, and I believe that that should be part of the Personnel Bylaw. I could be wrong, though. Thank you.
Would anyone like to address Miss Keating's comments? Or Moderator, recognize Board of Selectmen member Kevin Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In response to Mrs. Keating, I think that what we tried to do with this particular bylaw is to bring it in conformity with the town charter. Now, the bylaw itself, under the previous town manager, was not really adhered to. He opted to deal with individual contracts for certain employees. Subsequent to that, individual contracts have been removed, and all those people would fall now, as they should, under the Personnel Bylaw. In answer to Peggy's question, as a result of that, on a yearly basis, the classification plan, the salary schedule, would come before town meeting. So the plan itself is the constitution of the foundation that would lay out all the rights, responsibilities, and procedures that are set forth. The actual classification plan and enumeration of the department heads and where they stand on a M-grade schedule would be a yearly vote by town meeting. So the plan itself, once that's adopted, or if that's adopted, is the foundation, if you will, and then yearly. So in my opinion, I don't think it'd be proper for the M-grade schedule to be placed in the bylaw itself because that is a function of the town meeting on an annual basis, and I don't think you want to take that right away from yourself to be able to review that on an annual basis. I have no problem with Mr. Smith's amendment. I understand the rationale behind it. So in those terms, I would, if your vote first comes on Mr. Smith's amendment, I would speak in favor of that. And in totality, if amended, then I would, I would hope that the bylaw, as has been presented and worked upon, you know, and had a meeting of the minds, that that be approved in its totality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I hope that answered your question, Miss Keating. And for those of you who have no idea what he was talking about, you're in the majority. So, anything else to be heard on this Article Two? What we will do is first take a vote on approving the article as amended by Mr. Smith. So the wording will be changed to say that deliberate, false, or misleading statements in the application and selection process will automatically disqualify a candidate from further consideration and said candidate will be terminated if the candidate should be hired. Is that sufficient, Mr. Smith? That is what is up for approval right now. A ye vote will approve the article, will approve the bylaw with that amendment. If that amendment does not pass, then we'll go and ask if you want to approve the article as it's printed without the amendment. So all those in favor of approving the bylaw with Mr. Smith's amendment as just delineated, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no.
No.
Interesting. I'm going to ask for a show of hands. All those in favor of approving the article with Mr. Smith's amendment, please raise your hands. One hand. Thank you. Please put your hands down. All those opposed to Mr. Smith's amended approval. The ayes have it. Article Two passes with the amendment proposed by Mr. Smith. Thank you to all. We'll move on now, but before we go to Article 2A, I'd like to recognize the Chairman of the FinCom, Maureen Jansen.
Thank you, Sean. The Finance Committee moves to change the order in which the articles shall be considered by postponing consideration of the following articles. Article 2A, 2B, 3, 4, 6, 7, 10, 12, 13, 17, 19, and 20. Those are the monetary articles I mentioned earlier.
Yep.
Yeah, sure. Want me to?
Go right ahead.
Okay. 2A and 2B, then Article 3 and 4, 6 and 7, 10, 12 and 13, 17, 19, and 20.
So the motion from the Finance Committee, as mentioned previously, is essentially to postpone all of the money articles, the articles that require expenses, to be postponed to a later session of this town meeting until more information comes in from the state. Is there anything to be heard on the motion? If not, it will require a majority vote. All those in favor of postponing the articles, the 12 articles just delineated by the Chairman of the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. So, given that motion, we will now move to Article Five. That'll be found on Page 27 of your booklet. Article Five is to see if the town will vote to authorize the town to accept a sum of money equal to the state's annual release of funds as the state's share of the cost of work under the provisions of Chapter 90, Highway Improvement Funds or take any other action relative there to. Ms. Jansen?
Thanks. The Finance Committee moves to approve the article as written.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Five so the town can accept and spend its state's Chapter 90 funds. Is there anything to be heard on this Article Five? If not, all those in favor approving Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. We will now move to Article Eight. Article Eight's found on Page 28. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Section 2A of Chapter 64L of the Massachusetts General Laws and impose a local sales tax upon the sale of restaurant meals at a rate of 0.75% of gross receipts or take any other action relative there to. Ms. Jansen?
Before making the motion, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. As the committee responsible for making recommendations as to the town's financial position, we feel it is our duty to recognize a reoccurring additional revenue stream to the town. We feel this is, we feel that this small addition to the existing meals tax will not impact diners' decisions whether to dine in Abington or not. And if it results in additional revenue to our town, a portion of which may be paid by those from out of town who are dining here, we feel we must support it. We see this additional revenue as a way to support some of the needs of this town, which we cannot at this time fund. We encourage a yes vote on this article so we can begin realizing the revenue this will produce. For Article Eight, the Finance Committee moves that the town vote to accept the provisions of Section 2A of Chapter 64L of the Massachusetts General Laws and impose a local sales tax upon the sale of restaurant meals at a rate of 0.75% of gross receipts.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Eight as presented. This was a petition article. I'd like to defer and give the floor to the petitioner if you'd so choose. Please identify your name and address.
John Buckley, 333 Colonel Hunt Drive, Abington. The summary given by the Chairman of the Finance Committee certainly hit the nail on the head that there was a need for additional revenue stream for the town of Abington to fund the needs that are required. And I will try to summarize the provisions of the article as briefly as I can because we were here last year discussing the same subject matter, and the arguments in the four are still the same. What has changed since the last annual town meeting last spring is that there are now 151 communities in the Commonwealth that have adopted the provision as opposed to last year's annual town meeting in 125 communities. Other communities across the state have recognized the fact that there is a need for additional revenue to state have recognized the fact that there is a need for additional revenue to provide the services that a community needs and desires. This tax would raise the meals tax in the town of Abington from six and a quarter to seven percent. It would be an increase of 0.75 percent. It would increase the tab on a $50 restaurant bill by 37 cents. It would increase the tab on a $100 restaurant bill by 75 cents, from $162.25 to $107. It would seem to me that the needs of the town have grown over the last several years, and the town has an inability to fund those sources. Those who might have watched the selectmen's meeting have watched the town manager wrestle with the budget before it goes with the Finance Committee, and has indicated that the growth in real estate values of the town has either stopped or become very limited, so that there is not a natural growth in town. It will not be so until there is a sufficient sewer capacity to accommodate any additional residential or commercial growth. The Finance Committee has spent hours wrestling with the budgets of the town. They have come to the conclusion, and I would suggest rightly so, that there are a number of unnet needs in the town, whether they are the highway department, or whether they are the school operational budget, or whether they are the park and recreation department, or the senior citizens. This is a source of revenue, recurring annual source of revenue of some $225,000 annually. And I am brought to the document that was put out this evening, which is entitled "Basic Facts: You Know How To Collect the Local Options Meal Tax." And I would respond to, in particular, to the latest red herring that has been raised by the opponents of this tax about the estimates that have not been met in the Commonwealth. And they make reference to the fact that the revenue in Brockton was overestimated, the city of Brockton was overestimated by 45 percent, and that Bridgewater's revenue was overestimated by 19 percent, Hingham by 14, and Easton by 11. The revenue that is being distributed to the several cities and towns which have adopted this measure, 151 communities, is available on the Department of Revenue website. The estimates are there, the actual distributions are there, and none of these estimates, as stated in this document, are factual. Hingham for the last quarter, for example, was over the estimate. Easton failed the estimate by some $500 or $900. And what I guess, the theory, is that if we cannot make the $224,000 estimate, and if we miss by one or two percent, then we should not accept the $220,000. The logic escapes me. Beyond that point, the restaurant industry in the town of Abington has been extremely vociferous and very much opposed to the adoption of this tax because they believe that it's a tax that will put undue burden on their restaurant business. There are 151 communities that have adopted this legislation. I would suggest there is not one community that would adopt this legislation if they felt it was going to be detrimental or injurious to the restaurant business in that community. And I am struck by the comments in meetings past that the restaurant business is an extremely difficult business, and this just adds to the burden. I understand the restaurant business is an extremely difficult business, but the restaurant business in Abington is no more unique than the restaurant business in Middleborough, or Bridgewater, or Brockton, or Easton. The restaurant business is difficult no matter where you go. But these communities that I just enumerated have adopted this legislation, and they have helped the revenue stream in those communities to provide the services that citizens are looking for. I would hope that the time and effort that the Finance Committee has put into the examination of the budgets and the revenue stream in the town, and their recommendation that this provide a close to a quarter of a million dollars annually, which would be helpful in implementing services that the people of the town of Abington look forward to, would be followed, and their recommendation would be adopted. Mr. Moderator, I hope that Article Eight is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Is there anything else, if anything further to be heard on Article Eight? Yes, ma'am.
Susan Ferreira, Emery, 3 Shaw Ave. "I'm against this. I've been against this the past couple of times it's come up. I really do feel that you're not hurting the restaurateur, although I love Abington restaurants. I really feel like the one you're hurting is the waitress because the people come in from another town. They'd not expect them that. They get a little irritated at the additional tax, and it's the waitress that's going to lose. The restaurant, they can jack their prices up, but it's the waitress that's going to lose."
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Could you please identify yourself, your name and address?
Ann Riley, 218 Woodlands Way. "I want to say a few words about how I am in favor of this. As a resident of Abington, we have chosen to invest in our homes in Abington, but our investment goes way beyond our actual homes. We must also include our investment in our streets, our schools, our municipal buildings, our playing fields, including someday new tennis courts, our playgrounds," I know you didn't think I'd say that, "and our open spaces. These investments cost money, but they generate far greater value for all of us. I support the approval of the local options tax because it would allow money which is spent in Abington to be directly reinvested in Abington. Instead of increasing our real estate taxes, the approval of this article could provide a small but reliable future funding source for future town investments. I do not believe the approval of the meals tax would cause people to avoid Abington restaurants or drive them to other towns to literally save pennies on their bill. It has not happened in other towns. Personally, the approval of the meals tax would give me yet another reason to spend my money at Abington restaurants, knowing that my decision to eat in a restaurant in Abington would not only help support a local Abington business, but would now also provide close to $200,000 a year to our town to help strengthen our town's future financial stability. I urge you to vote yes on this article to support the meals tax. I urge you to choose an Abington restaurant when you decide to go out to dine, and I urge you to vote yes to help invest in the town of Abington. Thank you."
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. "I wanted to look in a little bit more about what the actual impact has been on the towns that have already passed this. So, I went to the Department of Revenue website, and I got a list of all the towns that have passed the local meals tax. And as Mr. Buckley stated, there's now over 150 of them. There's 108 towns that have now had a local meals tax for two years. Of those 108 towns, every single town has seen their revenue go up. Now, it's improper to suggest that their businesses are strengthened by having a local meals tax, but it's also misleading to suggest that business will be harmed by having a local meals tax. And if there's evidence to suggest that towns have been harmed by having a local meals tax, I would like to see it. I would like to see any facts that support this idea that a local meals tax harms local businesses and restaurants. Town of Abington is in a unique position. We actually have restaurants and bars and taverns that people from out of town want to come to, and not every town around us can say that. And maybe that's why they haven't adopted this. But we have restaurants that people drive from miles away to come visit because they're good places. So, this is a way for the town of Abington to raise revenue, to support the programs that we need. We got a piece of paper on the way in here today that said the town is strengthened by having a reserve account that helps reduce our bond rating, helps improve our bond rating. And an improved bond rating means that we get to borrow money for less, and it costs us less to do things like building a school. By having this local meals tax, we can put money away, we can lower borrowing costs, and we can pay for the stuff we really want. So, I please urge you to support this."
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
My name is Marcia Teravi. I live at 251 Colonel Hunt Drive. And I strongly believe that this is not the right thing to do in Abington. As I can reiterate, what I said just a few months ago when we were up here doing the same thing is, people will drive to the next town down to spend a few cents on a $3.50 gallon of gas. I truly believe that that will happen with the meals tax as well. I believe we're just pushing business out of town. In this economy, it's hard enough, I mean, people drive from all over to come to our restaurants. That might be true, but it's still a very competitive, very competitive business. I think most people can tell that by going through the town and looking at billboards that we have up, you know, giving this and giving that away to try to get businesses to stay in town. It's just beating our head against the wall. Like I said last time, if it was a fair playing ground, okay, more towns have approved it since the last time we were here. Not more towns surrounding Abington. The only one town surrounding Abington that has approved is Brockton. The rest of the towns have not approved it. So, I think it's a real unfair advantage to the restaurants here.
Thank you very much. Next person? Right ahead.
Sean O'Connell, 48 Clapp Street. "As a previous restaurant manager, I remember not too long ago, about 20 years ago, when the same hysterical situation happened when it came to the smoking situation, and everything was panned out. It was found out that the smoking didn't really hurt in most instances, or if not all the instances. It's hysteria." I support this. I think that people who are dining in restaurants are smarter. You know, we're not going to penalize a waitress because of a tax. And I would agree, you know, that we should pass this to the benefit of the town. It's a matter of just making money in the town and putting it back into the town. I doubt people are going to drive around Abington and not go to Mirugaza because, you know, they're going to have to pay 75 cents more, or 37 cents more, that they're not going to go to the Ale House because they're going to pay 37 cents more in the bill. I think we're smarter than that. And I would agree with Ms. Riley that I'll go out more often, and I'll make sure that I do it in Abington, as an Abington resident. Thank you."
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Christopher Sampieri, 77 Beaver Lane. "I feel that, you know, Abington does need new tax revenue. Absolutely, no one's going to deny that. But I feel that we're taxing the wrong people here. I don't think working people who want to go out for dinner on a Friday night should have to pay the taxes while corporations like Lowe's and Walmart and big business do not pay those taxes. So, I think I am against this tax because I think that we should be going after those people, not us. So, thank you."
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Paul Danahue, 94 Margaret Road. "Could you just tell us, I've heard one woman say that the only town around us that has done this is Rockland, and I thought I heard somebody else say that Rockland didn't generate as much income. Can we just get a sense of what surrounding communities have done this?"
Mr. Buckley, could you answer that? Jack, if you could grab a microphone, please. The question was what surrounding communities have adopted it, and who's its targets, or whatever?
No, I just want to know what surrounding towns have adopted it. The only reason being is if all the surrounding towns are doing it, are they really going to drive through Abington and go to Waymouth? If Waymouth's already got it adopted, or if Rockland's already got it adopted, why shouldn't we if everybody else has it?
The only abiding community that has adopted the provision is the city of Brockton.
Okay, so, Rockland doesn't have it?
Rockland does not have it. Rockland has the motel tax, the local option motel tax, but not a meals tax.
All right, so, the only one is Brockton.
Brockton is the only abiding community. There are other towns in the county and other towns, once removed, Easton, Middleborough, Bridgewater, for example, but they do not abide at the town of Abington.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Paul Malika, 152 Presidential Drive. "The past two times, Mr. Buckley brought this up, I voted against it. I'm in favor of it this time because sometimes the town has a lot of projects to be done. And with $200,000 of incremental revenue on a 10-year bond at 3%, that supports a $1,004,000 in debt. And on 15-year amortization, that would support about $1,000,009. So, that's a lot of debt capacity to do a lot of projects that the town has."
Thank you, Mr. Malika. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Lawrence Keo, 8 East Battery Street. "I've been known to frequent restaurants here in the town of Abington, and I just want you to think, even though I have a disagreement with some people on this article, it's 75 cents a hundred dollars. I mean, I don't think it's going to prevent me from going out. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Keo. Yes, ma'am. Could you state your name and address, please?
Mary Ann Dillon, 138 Broad Meadow Lane. "I'm just curious, what would the revenue be used for?"
Let me answer that question. Procedurally, we cannot make that determination. You would do that at next April's town meeting. If, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the meals tax were to be approved tonight, the tax would begin as of July 1st. The town would collect the money after July 1st, and then come next town meeting in April, we have an estimate of what we believe would be the total year's revenue, and next April's town meeting would decide where or how to spend that money. Is that fair and accurate? Hope I answered your question. Yes, sir.
Tom Dion, 27 Mulberry Lane. "Here we are again. The battle lines are formed. The Finance Committee supports this by a vote of nine to zero, the selectmen by a vote of four to one. But I do feel there's reason to reconsider and adopt the meals tax option in Abington this evening. The first is, the economy is improving. If you look at the economy, the stock market has hit record highs over the last month. Unemployment is down, the rate of new unemployment claims is down, and our chairman of the Federal Reserve, Ben Bonansky, has recently affirmed that low interest rates will continue into 2014, which is of particular interest for Abington residents. Not only does that improve the economy, but as we move to adopt a school feasibility study with the next article, low interest rates are good not only for residents, but also for borrowing cost. To pick up on Mr. Buckley's comments, according to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, there is no evidence to support the claim that these taxes have damaged any business. According to the Mass Department of Revenue, 43 percent of the communities have adopted the local meals tax option. Since our last meeting in October, more communities have adopted it, more communities are considering it this upcoming election season, the town meeting season. According to the Mass Department of Revenue, the local meals tax revenue is estimated for Abington, if we had adopted it a year or so ago, right now, for eight months, $165,000, according to their estimates. That puts us on track for the quarter of a million dollars that the proponents would suggest. For me, and maybe for you, I think Abington cannot continue to rely on the property tax solely to fund the many infrastructure improvements, capital programs, and school building costs that loom down the line. I think we all know that Abington will not be able to survive and prosper without additional revenue sources to support future spending plans. I believe, unlike the sheet, that the property tax is the most regressive tax that we have because it's not based on your income level. I think we all feel that we need to keep our property tax bills reasonable to make Abington an attractive choice for people considering moving to the South Shore. But the main reason that I think that we should support it, over the last three months, I've had the opportunity to attend virtually all the Finance Committee meetings and many selectmen's meetings. And it's become pretty obvious to me, when I listen to our town manager, that he feels we need to identify other sources of revenue other than the property tax to fund our operating budgets, our capital improvement programs, and our infrastructure needs, and I feel we should support him. So, I hope you join us tonight with the Finance Committee, Mr. Buckley, and others in supporting Article Eight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator."
Thank you, Mr. Dion. Thank you, Mr. Dion. Yes sir, please state your name and address.
Andrew Burbine, 30 Lantern Lane, Abington. Tom kind of stole the thunder as far as where the Board of Selectmen stood on this. We took a vote the other night in opposition to this, four to one. We took a vote against it back in October, four to one, and we took a vote against it back last April, five to nothing against it. So our position has not changed. The proponents like to talk about 151 towns that have adopted this tax, but there are 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, so less than half, only 43% have in fact adopted this. Since June of 2011, only three communities have adopted this tax. And I think it was Mr. Smith at the, the October meeting, who pointed out the fact that this is basically the proverbial camel's nose under the tent. This tax will not go down, it will not go away, I can guarantee you at some point in time, it will go up. It will not reduce your property taxes. I know Mr. Dion pointed that out, but again, I think that is a bit of a red herring, it will not reduce your property taxes. Three years ago, the, the sales tax was increased 25% from 5% to 6.25%. We did not see a property tax decrease, we did not see additional local aid. The businesses in this town, the restaurant industry employs a heck of a lot of people. They are almost, as far as I know, unanimously opposed to this tax. I should, I think we should stand with the restaurant owners and oppose this tax.
Thank you, Mr. Burbine. Mr. Dion. Mr. Donovan, if you'd like to, I know you have a knee problem. Mr. Donovan, what's your issue? I'm gonna, I'm gonna let these two more people speak. If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, stand up. Thank you, Mr. Donovan, we will move right along, but these two, three people will speak. Go right ahead. I'm gonna let them all speak. Only, you called them by names, so he has a chance to respond.
Mr. Moderator, my only question is, again, with the spending, future spending plans, where we see excessive infrastructure improvements that this town needs, we have school building costs potentially coming down the road, we have to cap a dump, there's a highway plan that was floated at $5 million. What is the plan to help fund those? Is it just going to be cut our way into prosperity? Is it going to be just relying on the property tax? We know in Abington, for the last three years, our property values have decreased. Now, we can't hang that on all the decisions that this town makes, because it was mainly based on the economy. However, if you look at other communities, and it is a bit anecdotal, but if you look at other communities that have invested in their infrastructure, have invested in their schools, I think you'll find, and it's, it's more you need to believe this, but I think their property values are coming back at a more rapid rate than Abington's. So again, I, I think it's more of a policy question that I think somebody owes us, where's the money going to come from for some of these infrastructure improvements?
Thank you, Mr. Dion. The next lady in line, please, state your name and address.
Cynthia Wales, 197 Ashton Street. I'd like to move to question, please.
I'm gonna, thank you very much. Out of courtesy to Mr. Smith, he was in line, I'll let Mr. Smith be the last, I'm sorry, Dave, Mr. Smith will be the last speaker on this. Sir.
The old age tax was originally the tax on residents of 5%. It was on all money that went over 99 cents, so until you got to a dollar, you paid no taxes. This, and now, of course, we have six and a quarter. The problem I have with percentages is, as food cost goes up and everything else go up, percentages should stay the same, they shouldn't keep increasing. This tax, like all other taxes that I know, whether it's gas, cigarette, you name it, social security or whatever else, once they get 3/4 of a percent, it becomes 1%. 2%, 3%, 5%, who knows where it ends? And I would suggest that this get voted down.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Alright, we're gonna take a vote on this. And first, I, I'd like to thank everyone here at these town meetings for your decorum. I think we do a great job of debating the issues honestly and fairly, and respecting each other's opinions, and I greatly appreciate that, and I'm sure the people here in the hall do appreciate that. So thank you for sharing your opinions. Now, the motion will be the finance committee, finance committee's motion to approve Article 8. This requires a majority vote. So all those in favor of approving Article 8, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I'm gonna go with the hand raising, once again. So all those voting in approval of Article 8, please raise your hands. Please put your hands down. All those who would like to vote against Article 8, please raise your hands. Article 8 will pass, a majority vote Article 8. I can do a standing count, if you want to have seven people would like to challenge the count, we can count everyone one by one if you'd like to do that. I just need seven people to question my decision.
Can we have, it's Claire Payne, 30 Reed Street, Abington. Can we have a vote, you know, count?
A standing count?
Yes.
That's two of you. If five more people want to stand up, I can do a standing count, we'll ask everyone to stand one at a time and count. If we don't get five people, my decision with the hands raising, one, two, three, four, five, are you standing in the back? Alright, there we go, we got seven. Okay, thank you very much. This is the rules of democracy. So, the four tellers that I appointed earlier, Mr. Colburn, Mr. Shea, Ms. Marini, and Mr. Wing. At this time, if you would like to vote to support the passage of Article 8, I ask that you please stand and remain standing. Joe Shea, Kenny Colburn. Katie?
39.
39.
41.
Kenny's 41. Joe Shea, you're gonna count everyone standing in the back who is a registered voter. Mr. Wing?
58.
Joe counts twice. Katie, did you count, would you please count the finance committee? I'm sorry, that was my fault. So, you're starting at 39, I can help you add eight, 47. 59. Okay, please be seated. I'm sorry? No, we did, thank you, added eight. Oh, I'm sorry, nine, I'm sorry, Deb, was it nine? That would be 48 for Katie's section. Thank you very much, sir. Alright, all those who are opposed to Article 8, please stand and remain standing, and we'll ask that you be counted once again.
I have 20.
Thank you. Did you count, Katie, did you count, Mr. Tyler?
Aye.
Thank you, he appreciates it.
What is my name?
Mr. Colburn?
26.
26. Mr. Wing?
28.
21. The yea votes at 206, the no votes at 97, Article 8 will pass. We move on now to Article 9. Article 9 is to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrower transfer from bill funds the amount of money necessary expended on the direction of the Abington School Building Committee, the feasibility study for the Abington school system. The moderator recognizes the Finance Committee Chairman, Maureen Jansen.
Thank you, Sean. Before making the motion, just another comment quick. The Finance Committee, the School Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Manager unanimously agree that we must approve the feasibility study in Article 9. This is an opportunity to review our existing school facilities and come out with an overall approach to the future of our town with respect to school buildings. Though the article mentions the Frolio School, the study will review all our school buildings and the overall needs of the town. We will not know the result of the study until it's completed, which could take 12 to 18 months. This is an opportunity to have the MSBA, Massachusetts School Board Association, pay for over 50% of the cost of the study, and the cost of whatever new or refurbished school is recommended. This is the first step in the process. Once this is approved, the town will need to approve the debt exclusion funding Abington's portion of the cost of the study. Once we have cleared these two hurdles, we need to look forward, we can look forward to the results of the study. New or refurbished schools can only add to the complete educational experience of our students. They will be in a learning environment created especially for the needs of today's students. They will be exposed to improved technology supporting today's career needs. Our home values will hopefully be supported, but, will hopefully be supported, where potential buyers will see Abington cares about education and the needs of students. This is a decision for the future, and we need to demonstrate that we're looking toward that future and supporting those in today, and supporting those needs today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just for the record, Maureen has to read, has to read the motion to the record, and there is specific and rather long language that the state requires us to recite for the record in order to qualify for the state funding. So Maureen, it's yours.
Thank you. The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the sum of $800,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study at the Frolio Middle School, 1071 Washington Street, Abington, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on the need as demonstrated by the MSBA, and any cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, and further provided that the appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on the tax imposed by MGL 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 and 1/2. And that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between, between the town and the MSBA.
Thank you, Maureen. Just before we go any further, I just want to make sure, I have two versions. I had one that had the word "Abington" interjected throughout. Hers was just basically saying "the town, the town, the town," the treasurer, not the Abington treasurer. We all sit with that, as far as Town Council and our treasurer tax clerk to go? You're comfortable with it? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the motion is on the floor to essentially approve the feasibility study, and to authorize the town to buy, to borrow the money, and to accept the reimbursement from the state. If it passes here tonight, it would also have to pass at the April 28th ballot elections. If it fails here tonight, it doesn't matter what happens at April 28th. Is there anything to be heard or discussed on Article 9? I'd like to recognize the proponents of the articles, members of the Abington School Committee, Mr. McNulty and Ms. Cleary.
Jeanette Leary, 395 Abington, 395 Ramdell Street. I'm here representing the School Committee and the children of Abington, and I would like to share some information in relationship to our feasibility study, and hopefully answer questions many of the residents may have. The first one being why we need a school. Our newest building in Abington is the building in which we are here tonight, it's 50 years old itself, opening in 1962. The Woodsdale in '58, and the Frolio in '37. The science labs, classrooms, technology, and wiring in our schools are outdated and not adequate to meet the educational needs of our students in Abington today. Why the Frolio? The official application just requires the town, that it's any town that's applying, to list a school which has obvious needs for renovation and/or upgrades. However, all buildings in Abington will be looked at to determine what the town needs or doesn't need. As Maureen mentioned, how much it will cost and what, and what that school will be, we will not know until the feasibility study is done. The most fiscally responsible, educationally appropriate, and practical solution to Abington's school building needs will be addressed, and will most likely be a high school, a high school, middle school, or a middle school. And also previously noted, as by Maureen, the funding of this feasibility study, the Article 9, and then the following ballot question, has been supported by the Town Manager, along with unanimous support from our Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the School Committee itself. Thank you.
Tom McNulty, 563 Summer Street, also a School Committee member. Now, if everybody, if you turn the page, you'll basically see the feasibility study. I'm not gonna go through it in detail, you already heard. I just wanted to point out a couple things. Why the feasibility study? It's a comprehensive study that's required by the state at this point. We need to approve this ballot to at least look at everything that's on the table. What we need to do as a town to improve the schools. So, we're on a timetable with the state, we need approval for it at this meeting, or else we need to reapply for it. Everybody asked, did we do a feasibility study back in 2003? We did. But as the state always does, they change the rules and regulations. For us to get grant money, we have to do a new feasibility study. As previously mentioned, $800,000 is about the running cost. Rockland just did one a couple years ago for their new complex that they built there. If we look at the window project, we got reimbursed at a rate of 54.16%. So if we utilize that reimbursement rate, we're looking at approximately $433,000 that we would be stuck with lending. And everybody goes, how is this going to affect me? Well, if you look on the previous, the next page, a one-year amortization of the, of the amount that we would require is broken out, ranging anywhere from $166 to $51. And in the statement itself, if it's amortized over five years, it's approximately $13 for a year for five years for a $300,000 house. So it is, it is a little bit of money. However, we do have some additional expenditures that are coming off the loan books. But this is, this is, we're at a critical juncture with our schools to at least determine what needs to be done. And as previous, you know, the School Committee has unanimously voted for, at least, let's get this process done.
Thank you, Ms. Leary and Mr. McNulty. I'd like to recognize the Town Manager, Mr. John D'Agostino.
Mr. Moderator, thank you very much. As all of us know, the town of Abington is in a unique situation. We have a very old school structure, we need to improve that school structure some way, somehow. The feasibility study will give us that opportunity collectively as a community. As a matter of fact, that feasibility study is made up of approximately 22 residents of the town of Abington. It's us. It's every one of us in this room who has a desire to see not only our town succeed, but our school system succeed. This is about success, it's not about failure, and it's not about whether we need it or we don't need it. The feasibility study will provide us with the tools that we need to move forward in a positive direction. Article 9, supporting documentation, the next page, shows you that we have a significant amount of debt coming off, at about the same time that we're going to add approximately We have $654,585.94 coming off of our debt exclusion amount. That is our sewer project that we voted on several years ago, as well as Griffin's Dairy. Those two items constitute the $654,000. So how is this going to affect your tax rate? Your tax rate next year is still going to go down. The amount, obviously, will be less than the $654,000. But in the end, what we end up with as a town and as a school system, is a study that will map out the next 20 years for this community. There is nothing more important as a service delivery mechanism that we have to offer than to educate our kids, and to do so in a way and in a manner that provides them with the ability to succeed in today's marketplace. So I would urge all of us to stand united as a community, and vote in favor of this feasibility study. It is about our future, it is about tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. Is there anything else to be heard on Article 9? Any questions or comments? Yes sir.
Rich.
Rich Tasta, 111 Regency Lane. My son, I have a seven-year-old son, he attends Beaverbrook in the first grade. And one of the things that they teach at Beaverbrook is about a sense of community. They learn about being part of something bigger than themselves. They gain a sense of unity and belonging. When they believe that they're part of a community, they have an interest in making it function well. They learn to take responsibility for their own actions and contribute to the group. By putting the needs of the community ahead of our own individual self-interests, the community as a whole can benefit from the cooperation of its parts. It's important to the future of our students and our community that we approve Article 9. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
David Lee, 127 Oak Street. Mr. Moderator, maybe you could explain to me what the 2.5% proposition is? Is that what they're trying to put in?
No, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to explain, but it's, thank you for the question. Would someone like to address the issue? What is the relation of this article to Proposition 2 and 1/2? Thank you, Mr. Lee.
That's my concern.
Moderator, what's that?
That's my concern right now.
Thank you. Moderator recognizes the town manager, John D'Agostino.
Mr. Moderator, the relationship of this article to 2 and 1/2 is that we are going to vote contingent upon a vote that will occur at the general election that will exempt this expenditure from the 2 and 1/2 limit, which would allow us to expend above the 2 and 1/2 limit in the amount appropriate to fund this article.
I see. That's going to be on the ballot then, okay.
Yes.
That was my concern. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Moderator recognizes Mr. Robert Wing.
352 Adams Street. First of all, I have two questions. Mr. D'Agostino or maybe the treasurer could, is, is the debt coming off? Is there any coming on that we should know about? And my second question would be for, I guess, either Mr. Schaefer or Mr. D'Agostino. Out at a local restaurant this weekend, we were talking about this feasibility study and one of the gentlemen with me said he could do it for $100. All you need to know is that every school needs to come down and every school needs to be rebuilt. So, given that, there were some questions of what, what does the $800,000 give us? I think Mr. D'Agostino said it gives us a plan for the next 20 years, but what is that, what is involved in that plan? If that can be explained to us, please. Thank you.
All right. Let me ask Mr. D'Agostino, if you could address the first question, which is the debt coming on or any debt coming off? Mr. Schaefer, if you could address what the study might give us? Thank you.
The debt that is actually coming off, I've indicated, is the dairy farm as well as the sewer debt. What debt is coming on that I am aware of in the future is debt that we've already incurred in relationship to the purchase of Groveland Street and the $300,000 for the arch, both of which are within the property tax limit that we currently pay under Prop. 2 and 1/2. So, that is what I am aware of unless Leo, you have something else.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Provost? Moderator recognizes our town treasurer and tax collector, Mr. Leo Provost.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leo Provost, 125 Van Buren Drive. I just want to be very clear to make sure that you know that there is another item out there that is a debt exclusion. It's the Woodsdale Window Project. I have figured those numbers into my spreadsheet so that the net information that I've been circulating of what the debt coming off will be includes the increased debt for that item. The Groveland Street and the Memorial Arch is not a debt exclusion. That will come out of the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Provost. Moderator like to recognize the superintendent of schools, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Peter Schaefer.
Thank you for the question. To answer the question, basically, what do you get for the study? Because you have to hire the professional design services of architects, engineers and an owner's project manager, which are required by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, you have to pay their engineering fees. And for that, you get the pre-schematic, pre-bid type documents. And I brought the sample that the Rockland Public Schools completed before they started their middle high school project for people to look at if they're interested in or upon request, you can see it at my office. It is the pre-designed, pre-schematic documents and all of the engineering costs that the state require us to perform before they will help us pay for the majority of the study and before they'll consider us for any funding in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Yes, sir. Please identify your name and address.
Maldeolus, 438 Rockland Street. I want to stand up here and I want to thank the selectman for recognizing my wonderful wife that passed away, and I want to thank him very deeply and I really mean that. And I, and the other thing I want to talk about is our schools. Our schools are the most important thing. I have no children in this town, in schools or grandchildren. I am a lone person and I pay pretty good taxes. I don't care. I want to see our kids in this town go somewhere. And I think we, I'm on a fixed income and there's no excuse. If we can help our school people get something going in our schools and get our cherished, these kids, everything to us, we've got to start thinking of them and bringing them back into our category. Make them strong. Make them intelligent. Let them go places. Please, dear God, everyone, listen to me. Protect our children.
Thank you, Mr. Deulis.
Jeanie Barrett, 47 Van Buren Drive. Um, excuse me. Everybody seems to be so worried about what our tax rates are going to be doing. What I was wondering with these figures at $13.70 a year, my question is to the person who's selling their house in the next 10 years or five years, you're talking about maybe $400 or $500 out of your pocket in the next 10 years. What is it going to do to your resale value if we don't put these schools in? Now's our time and if we don't do it, we're going to be on the bottom of this list again and we need to really take care of our schools and our students.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Roger Bodie, 165 Loganberry Drive. I just want to point out that I've actually been through this process before in other communities and this is really an incredible opportunity for the children in Abington, for the taxpayers in Abington, any property owner to be able to maintain their values. But one important thing to, that you need to realize is if tonight we say no, as a community, we're not going to go forward with this feasibility study, the MSBA is not going to be coming back to the town of Abington for many, many years. At last count, there was over 357 town projects on their docket and the MSBA has looked at our projects and our schools here in Abington and said, whoa, there's a real need here. They're not really looking to give away any of their money to any community that doesn't have a need. I don't have any children in Abington anymore. They're all gone off and they've done well because of the education that they've got in Abington. And for me, as a citizen of the town, I'm willing to stand up, have pride in my community and to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Steve Beltis, 138 Catherine. I'm 28 years old. I've been in these, I was in these school systems for a while. These schools, as Mr. Wing pointed out, they need to be torn down and rebuilt and rewired. But my main concern is, as we go forward from here, how are we going to keep up with the technology going forward? Is this plan going to include, for the next 20 years, going through these schools every four or five years or however many years it is going forward that we're going to have to look into for technology improvements, wiring and lighting? I'm all for this and I'd like to actually move the question going forward, if that's possible, but as I said, I want to know, how is this going to go forward from, go forward for the next 20 years? If there's a 20-year blueprint, what's the next 20 years include?
Would you like an answer to that question? Or is it, okay, would someone from the school department like to answer the question about, basically, is there, I guess, a long-term planning aspect to the feasibility study?
Thank you for the question, your school superintendent, Peter Schaefer. The money for this study only pays for the study itself. Out of the study will emerge a responsible plan, as we described, for the next, for the future, for decades for Abington. If the town approves that study and that plan and wants to move forward with school construction, that school construction includes state-of-the-art technology when the school is built, furnishings, all the furniture, desks for students and technology. After that point, you then take the responsibility for the maintenance and the upkeep of the technology, just like you do today. After they make that initial investment, they move to the next community. But currently, you know, we've got to keep up with that without any of that additional support. But this, if it's approved, would bring that one shot with the building.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Hope that answered your question? Yes, ma'am. Name and address.
American Idol. Hi, I'm Lauren Van Luling. I live on 58 Van Buren Drive. I've been in Abington for just six years. I left all my siblings, four of them, and my parents in South Weymouth. And being here in Abington, I have met wonderful, wonderful, caring people and some of the most amazing teachers and I come from a family of teachers. I ask that we, I ask on the behalf of my three children who are seven, six and four, please approve this article. I'd like my children to have something state-of-the-art, something beautiful like all the towns around us have in their brand-new schools. We are the only town really in the area that does not have a brand-new school and we deserve it. I went to the Annie Show and those kids put on this amazing production in that Froio school and it's barely a theater. So, thank you for listening and I hope we can approve it.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anything further to be heard on Article 9? If not, to pass this article requires a minimum 2/3rds vote. If there's nothing more to be said, I'll ask for the vote then. All those in favor of approving Article 9 in the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I can declare a 2/3rds vote. It has passed.
Aye.
I feel obligated to remind people, however, that this is a two-step process. April 28th, you'll have the ballot to elect some of your local officials and also will be question one, which will have to also be passed by majority vote in order for the feasibility study to proceed. Okay. Based on the earlier vote, we'll be now moving on, we'll skip Article 10 and move to Article Article 11 is see if the quorum of any annual or special town meeting shall be 75 registered voters of the town. Ms. Jansen.
The Finance Committee moves to amend the town bylaws, Section 152-4, by replacing the number 150 with the number 75 so that the section provided, so the section provides as follows. The quorum of any annual or special town meeting shall be 75 registered voters of the town.
Finance Committee makes a motion as outlined on page 30 of the materials that are handed out to amend Sections 152, 4, to change the number of 150 for the required forum, quorum, to 75. This is a petition. I'd like to recognize the petitioner first, if you'd like to address this article. Moderator recognizes Mr. Paul Mollick.
I've been a resident of the town for 20-plus years. I've attended town meetings for probably the past 15-plus. Two years ago, I sponsored a petition article to bring the, change the quorum from 150 to zero. I think I lost somewhere for three, the vote was, I lost it by a three to five, three to five votes. That night, there was great attendance, just like tonight. During the course of discussion, somebody got up and was pretty animated about, about why we shouldn't approve it. That was when it was at a zero quorum and, and in subsequent town meetings, I hadn't seen the person, but it's here tonight. And what does that mean? It means that by looking to change the quorum, people show up. This time, the request is to reduce it from 150 to 75. Just to give you a little background, I'm in, working in banking, commercial banking, I've been in a commercial loan office of 30-plus years. And about 30 years ago, when I was making my first loan, I set up an appointment with a customer to go out and see him and the appointment was at 1:00. And it was a sizable loan and the CEO of the company also had at that meeting, the CFO, probably four department heads. And I showed up like about quarter to. And when I got there, the CEO of the, of the company said, you know, you're 45 minutes late. I've assembled like five people from my, from my company and you've really sucked up 45 minutes of their time just kind of hanging around. So, we can't meet today and we'll set up another meeting and next time you come back, if you're late, I'll find a new bank. In terms of my experience, when we have meetings at different things, people are on time and that's the only way that you assemble so many people. If you don't start on time, then it's a tremendous inefficient waste of people's time and it's kind of disrespectful. So, what I'm trying to do is to, is to make town meetings start on time by changing the quorum to 75. It would be a more efficient use of everyone's time. It would reduce costs for the town for having to reschedule town meetings, traditional nights. And I think if we started at 7, then we'd probably finish, have a pretty good chance of finishing in the course of one evening. Now, no one comes at 7 because we don't start at 7. People show up like 7, 7:15 because somewhere between 7:30, maybe we'll start and if not, things get postponed. And this will, this will result in, I think, greater turnouts and again, the possibility of finishing one night. What I've did is I check with local cities and towns, or towns that have zero quorums and right at this point, Bridgewater, Duxbury, Marshfield, Norwell, Situate and West Bridgewater all have zero quorums. Avon has 75 and they have 75. Some of the towns that have zero quorums go back 20-plus years. And the comments, checking with the town clerks from all those communities, have indicated that by changing the number, it allows town meetings to start on time and people feel more responsible about, about if I don't show up, maybe something will pass because I'm not there. That may be, but it places the responsibility of starting on time to you, the residents of the town. So, that's the purpose for, of my petition article and the Finance Committee voted in favor of it, unanimous vote. Couldn't work out a time with the, with the selectmen, but I think it's, hopefully I will get your support on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mollick. Is there anything to be heard further on Article 11? Yes, sir. Mr. Deulis, were you waiting? Go ahead. Then Mr. Rangel will be right after you. Mr. Deulis says he wants to come up front so he can face people.
First of all, I argued against this the last time he brought this up. I'm going to argue it again. You people want to give up your rights. You want 79 people to tell you how your town's going to run. You go with this man. But I'll tell you, you listen to me and you fight for your rights and don't give them up. Start now.
Thank you, Mr. Deulis. Mr. Rangel.
Jeff Rangel, 242 Shar Avenue. But he said it very well. I don't think we're in the right, we're going in the right direction to, to go down to lower numbers that we are. We're trying to stay as a town that's run by selectmen, run by the people. And if we lower this, the amount of people that are going to show up here every day, it's going to be very reflective of what we see around the nation where there's very few people actually making all the decisions for the many. And honestly, looking at 150, I don't know how I thought about this last time when we lowered it to 150. I think I was a, kind of, thought that it was a shame that it's a sign of the times that we're losing so many people. But to reduce it to 75 or even to zero is just a shame and it's quite frankly, just a sign that we're getting lazier. We don't go, we don't ask our neighbors to come with us anymore. It really, when, we have a lot of people involved. It really, when, we have a lot of people involved, people will go get their friends, they'll bring their families with them, or their wives, or their husbands, to come with them. And I do really believe that it's a terrible mistake going backwards. I would, you know, even, I won't make it, but I would love to see this thing increased to a higher number of people that should show up here, and not to worry about what time we start or not. It's not a matter of us wasting our time, it's a matter of getting business done with the enough people to put, to give their input, or at least understand what in the world the town is doing for them.
That's it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rangel. Yes, sir. If you could restate your name and address?
Steve Beltus, 138 Catherine. I am opposed to this. Right now, we have, our citizenship in this town is roughly fifteen thousand residents of this town, give or take. So, at 150, we're at 1% of total residents is required for a town quorum. You're looking to make it down to half a percent of the people of the town. That's not a quorum. It's not, that's not even close to being a, technically, a quorum of the town. If anything, we should be raising the quorum level at this point. Additionally, as I look at this, as I think about this right now, if we bring seventy-five, if you have an issue in your neighborhood, that you feel strongly about in your neighborhood, you bring seventy-five of your resident, of your local neighbors with you, you can pack a town meeting early enough, to start early enough, especially if your, if your article is high enough on the warrant, you can get an article to pass before the quorum is filled, before the rest of the people come in. And additionally to the petitioner, one of the towns you mentioned, Duxbury, with the zero quorum, they have their town meetings on Saturday. Should we have our town meetings on a Saturday as well? If they, if they're holding on a week, on a weekend, when they have no, when most of the people are off, they can have a zero quorum because people will come. We hold our, we hold our meetings on Monday night at seven o'clock, because we have to allow people to get home, and get from work, get dinner, get the babysitter set up with the kids, and come here. Sometimes that doesn't happen until seven, seven-fifteen. And as for tonight, at 7:07, when the town moderator did call to, call us to order for to take our seats, the dignitaries of the town and of the, and our congressional representatives, they were still talking, chatting. They didn't settle themselves down until about seven-fifteen, when the moderator called us again to order for a second time. So, we were ready to start on time tonight, and I don't think that we should be, I don't think we should lower it a quarter.
Thank you, Mr. Beltus. Miss Marini?
Katie Marini, 6 Winthrop Street. I would like to respectfully disagree with the three gentlemen before me. I think that if there's fifteen thousand people in this town, and a hundred and fifty of the, a hundred and fifty of the people around you are representing those fifteen thousand people, it doesn't matter if it's a hundred and fifty people, or if it's the nine people that sit up here and argue about the budget, day in and day out. I think that if we started it with a zero quorum, I think it would motivate people, because it wouldn't be the same, people would be nervous about allowing the same fifteen residents to show up and make all the decisions. So, I would like to amend the, the motion to signify that there would be a quorum of zero.
As much as I love you, Katie, I can't allow that motion.
Hi, Sean.
No, I'm sorry, it's beyond the scope of this article. He's set the threshold at 75, so we can play with the number between 75 and 150. Thank you for your thoughts, I appreciate it, but regretfully, that's my job. Yes, ma'am?
Catherine Salem, 22 Lantern Lane. I also disagree with the previous gentleman respectfully. I don't think that a quorum being lowered prevents anyone from coming in and exercising their democratic right to vote at town meeting. It does not lock the doors at 75 people, it simply says, "Those people who get here and are ready to conduct the business of the town can begin." It doesn't prevent the rest of the fifteen thousand registered voters from coming in the door. And I do, I understand the fear, I understand the concern that there could be a hot issue that people could quote-unquote "pack" town meeting, well then, the other people should pack it as well, and come to vote in opposition, if that's how they feel. I am in favor of this motion, and I hope you will join me in that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address?
Terry Mays, 1020 Hancock Street. I am not in support of this article. I was not in support when we came down to 150. I understood the argument at the time. We always had problems getting quorums. Since we've dropped it to 150, which I still don't think is enough, but that's what it is, we haven't had a problem having, calling a quorum. And I truly believe that government is run by those who show up, and I would really ask you not to support dropping the quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, would you like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak after this gentleman? Or maybe we should wait to see what he says. Go right ahead.
Tom Tashin, 130 Shar Ave. Previous town meeting involving the schools, I mentioned that, uh, that they have a, the schools have a call system that can call out, and just, you know, to remind everyone on the night of a town meeting, that there is a town meeting. The next, because it happened to be a school thing, the school department, I'm sure, made that phone call the next, the next town meeting, but I haven't heard another one since. I was just thinking that maybe if we could get the, the school department to do that, that that may help fill the, um, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else to be heard in this article? Yes, sir. Moderator recognizes Mr. Michael Franny, member of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple things. With my dealings with the town, I have sat in that seat before, and people, a lot of times, they complain about special interests. First one, to address the issue of a zero quorum. Two years ago, we had the opportunity to reduce the quorum to zero. The following year, we had some financial issues, where we scheduled a town meeting for a date certain, say it was May 30th. And in the meantime, we didn't have enough information for the town manager, the Finance Committee, coming from the state, to hold that meeting. So, the word in the street there was, we were gonna cancel it. But by law, we still had to have that meeting. So, nobody's gonna show up, you've got a zero quorum. Five people could've showed up, they could've demanded to have the meeting, and it would've been had. I, I just want to tell you that the Board of Selectmen voted five to nothing, not to support this thing. I do think as a town, we have a lot of different things, we just got new signs, that's a step in the right direction. If somebody can tell me what those hieroglyphics are on the side, I'd appreciate that. You know, I mean, we can and should do certain things. I would tell you, I would ask the school committee and the park and rec commissioners not to issue field permits, and not to schedule school functions on the night of the annual town meeting. I think that's very important. That's making, making, parents make a decision over what they should do for the civic duty of their children, and naturally, your children should win. I just, I just feel very strongly that this is, although I salute the gentleman as a faithful member of town meeting, and I know he's very sincere about this, I don't see where we've had a problem with 150. And if you just notice, I mean, a lot of people can leave this hall after, after a certain article, and it could be seventy-five people making the decisions of the town. I'm not comfortable with that. And folks, honestly, I know there's apathy, there's a lot of apathy. I see it in all our towns around, people don't run for certain boards, and our own board right now, and our own health board, we have an open seat, nobody took out papers, nobody could be that concerned. So, I would just tell you something, and, you know, I think that if you vote for this, apathy's gonna win. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. Moderator recognizes Mr. Malika, and if no one else wants to speak, I'd like to move along with this one after Mr. Malika.
Just a couple last thoughts. I think that the, the doors are always open for people to participate in town meeting. We have over ten thousand registered voters. If 230, if 40 showed up tonight, as a percentage of the registered voters, that's, that's pretty poor. The first gentleman said that it'd be a step backwards, but the reality is, anybody can come, and the more, the more, the better. This forces, really puts the responsibility on people to show up. And, and if, and if, if you don't come and things pass, then you have no one to blame but yourself, so.
Thank you, Mr. Malika. Once again, I'd like to thank everyone for the respect shown to each other, and I'd like to thank Mr. Deulis for the excitement he always brings to town meeting. You do a good job. All right, the motion will be had on Article 11, will be the motion to approve the change to lower the quorum from 150 to 75. So, if you vote yes, you are approving to lower the quorum to 75. If you vote no, the quorum will remain at 150. Understand? All those in favor of lowering the quorum to 75, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it, the quorum will remain at 150. Thank you. We'll now move to Article 14. Article 14 is to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Abington bylaws by inserting a new bylaw entitled "Illicit Discharges to Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System", and it is printed in the information that was printed, handed out tonight, page 31 and following. Ms. Jansen?
The motion is on page 40. The Finance Committee moves that the town vote to amend the town of Abington bylaws by inserting a new bylaw entitled "Illicit Discharges to Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems," as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Jansen. I'm gonna ask and recognize the town, uh, town manager, John D'Agostino, to give a brief explanation of the purpose of this bylaw.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. The purpose of this bylaw is to comply with both the state and federal regulations as it relates to storm water management discharge. The communities in Massachusetts by FY 13 must have adopted a bylaw similar to this to allow for a proper management of our storm water runoff. This is so that we can protect our lakes and our streams from illicit discharge. This bylaw will allow us to be in compliance with both DEP and the Federal Department of Environmental Protection as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. Is there anything to be asked, or anything to be discussed on Article 14? Love that stare, oh, there we go. Oh, two gentlemen.
Steve Beltus, 138 Catherine. To the town manager, one of the things that it says that we cannot discharge is soap. I know that sounds kind of odd, but if we're washing our car in our driveway, and it runs down our driveway into the street, into the catch basins, is it just discharge of soap? So, can you explain a little more? I mean, it just seems a little odd if we're wa, you know, if we can't wash our cars in our driveways from now on.
I don't, I don't believe that that, that is prohibiting you from doing that. The, the amount of discharge that we are referring to in this regard are large amounts that are going to discolor runoff streams, and that...
Can I, can I interrupt you, John, just to help both out? And I think she just got pointed, there is an exemption, there's a list of exemptions at page 36, and...
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see that in the original warrant.
Section three, oh, sorry, section four, water from individual residential car washing is okay.
Okay.
If you own a commercial car wash, you can't pump it all out into the street.
And that is the issue.
Sorry there, John.
Lawrence Kio, 80 East Battery Street. If you sell a flood, you can't pump it out in the street anymore?
Well, actually, that's from, let's see...
Is that an exemption?
I believe there is. There's an exemption, section two, water from exterior foundation drains, footing drains, crawl space pumps, or air conditioning condensation.
As long as that's not going directly into our sewer system, I would, I would think Mr. Stone would be very upset about that.
Into your sewer system, right.
Yeah.
They come and check on that every once in a while.
Smoke, die, they do a lot of things.
Right. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, would you like to speak?
Tom Tashin, 130 Shar Ave. I just, I'm just reading for the first time, I don't know what it means, but Shar Ave is right behind the high school. Every single street up there dumps into a creek that runs right behind this high school, and that follows down and flows in behind the thing. Does that mean that we're gonna have to rebuild the entire sewer system to keep it from running into that creek?
What we would, what we would need to do is to identify those sources that are discharging into the stream or the creek, that are causing some of these pollution issues into our streams. It's not about rebuilding an entire system.
Well, I have, I have a friend whose house you could throw a baseball at from the schoolyard back here.
Does he have goats in his yard?
It's across the street.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The next street behind him, the, the street, all the water that's collected on that street is dumped into an open drain in the backyards of all the street, all the neighbors on that street, running through all their yards, and then into that creek. Does that mean that the town is gonna have to, you know, redo that whole, no, I mean, you're potentially talking a lot of money if you're gonna have to replumb the, this whole section, I don't know about the rest of the town, but you're talking about that whole neighborhood back here, you know, replumbing the streets.
And that may certainly be the case, and if we, if that is something that we would, we would have to do, it'd become part of a capital plan to achieve that objective. Again, the, the, the point here is to protect our streams, and, and if there is this illicit type of discharge occurring, and I'm not familiar with, other than the individual who owns some goats on the street, I am not necessarily familiar with all of the discharge.
When you come up Shar Ave, there's a little bridge there.
Yep, I know exactly where it is.
When you look over the side, there are two pipes coming out, right into the stream, and that is the town water being dumped into that stream.
Well, then, then we will have to...
There will be a major...
We would have to address that. Unfortunately, in this bylaw, we would have to address it.
Anything else to be heard or asked on this Article 14? If not, all those in favor of approving the "Illicit Discharges to Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System" bylaw, as printed in the booklet, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you.